County Presley Board of County Commissioners Meeting is January 26, 2021. May I have a roll call, please, Lou?
County Commissioners, after.
Hello?
Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy. Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. Can we have the announcement for the Open Public Meeting Law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has them satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and virtual location included in the annual notice adopted at the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of the law.
Please stand for the invocation.
Oh God, who provides for thy people and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants. Our county commissioners in this county of Passaic that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Commissioner Duffy, Pledge of Allegiance, please. Under God, indivisible, liberty-
Liberty, justice for all.
At this time, I would like to have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces. And I would also like to add now to remember the over 400,000 Americans who have succumbed to the COVID virus. Thank you.
Thank you, Director.
Director, if I may, just, and I apologize, I was talking, I was on mute. We also learned today of a passing of another gentleman who worked for Rutgers University, Dr. Brooks. Dr. Brooks was instrumental in developing the saliva test that the county of Passaic has been using, I guess, since May. And he was the person that was our contact with Rutgers, who ultimately connected us with Vault Health. And Dr. Brooks passed away at the age of 50. So I'd ask that everyone keep him in their thoughts and prayers as well.
And also, Anthony, we should also mention the passing of a longtime advocate for Pregness Healthcare Center, Ed Lamontain, who was a champion for the facility for the residents, fought the good fight in these, his leftists.
Thank you. That really is really very important. Ed was very instrumental as we developed the plans for Pregness Healthcare Center. He was the advocate for the, for all of the residents up there. Probably most of the residents up there don't even realize the, the role that he played in how the rooms are laid out, right down to the color schemes of, of the facility. So thank you for remembering that as well.
Okay. May I have approval of the minutes for December 29, 2020, and January 7, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Oh, second.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by-
Where are we?
Roll call.
County Commissioners, after. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our Administrator, Anthony De Nova, for the Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Director. I appreciate it. Good evening, everybody. We have three presentations here this evening. The first of which, we are honored to have our Acting Superintendent of our Passaic County Technical and Vocational Schools, John Maello, along with our Board President, Michael Kasha, are here with us. And of course, our President of Passaic County Community College, Dr. Stephen Rose. First, congratulations, John and Mike, on your new positions at, at the vocational schools.
Thank you very much.
So tonight, we're going to have a presentation about the Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act and what impact that could have here in Passaic County and our collaboration between two of our greatest partners in the community college and our vocational school. So I, I don't know who's taking the lead, John, maybe you are, but I'll turn it over-
Actually, I'm sorry, excuse me. Mr. Shavinsky, our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, is taking the lead in giving the presentation.
Okay, great. Is Ted there or? Ted, how are you doing?
I'm good, I'm good.
Good. All right, so why don't you start the presentation?
I'm going to share our screen and start our presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, as, as we begin the evening, first, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners and the Passaic County Administration for the opportunity to present the district's request to support and their support in pursuing their approval to submit a joint institution application under Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act. I will give a little overview as to the Bond Act also, so that we're all up to speed with that, since it's been two years since its passing. Introductions, Dr. Rose is joining us from Passaic County Community College. Mr. Michael Kasha, Senior, will be joining us here at the campus as President of PCTVS Board of Education. John Maello as Acting Superintendent. Mr. Rich Gilio as Business Administrator. Mr. Steve Coppa as Principal Architect at Coppa Montalbano. Joining us remotely is Mr. Albert Bougleon. And I'm Ted Shavinsky, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. As we begin. Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act, to give a quick overview. In 2017, the legislation, legislation in New Jersey realized that 21 county vocational school districts were unable to meet the needs of 17,000 students. And so in this case, Passaic County made up 15% of that 17,000 unmet need of students applying to the county vocational school district for educational purposes. This unmet need was based on the size of our facility, and the bill and legislation was NJS 2293, which received bipartisan support unanimously, along with an overwhelming voter support as a public referendum in 2018. On a quick note, that information to provide to you was November 6, 2018, the voters approved the general obligation bond of $450 million for county vocational school districts to expand and $50 million for county colleges. Part of this Securing Our Children's Bond Act also aligns the ability for colleges and secondary institutions like high schools and the county vocational programs to actually align their programs better to meet the needs of the students and the workforce. I'm not going to read through the slides, so I'm going to allow you to read those. I'm going to read through my notes that are adjacent to it, so if you have any questions, please ask. But the idea of this was to fund career and technical education expansion projects. And again, it's only available to the county vocationals and county colleges. And the idea was to also strengthen our long-term relationship, which has been longstanding as a collaborative relationship between the college and the high school with dual enrollments. Our students graduate high school typically with anywhere between nine to 15 college credits currently, and this would expand that program. As you can see from a, a quick clip out of a report that was asked to be put together by Governor Murphy, this is on building the strength of our prepaying 12 into a higher education system to meet our needs. I'll just read quickly the point that says, "We can and must do everything to ensure our residents are equipped to succeed in current and future careers." And it outlines the alignment of education and educational institutions at low levels, including primary, secondary, and post-secondary institutions of higher education. More specifically, to equip our students with residence and residents with technical skills for job readiness and alignment that has long been a part of our history at both county institutions. So a little bit about our plan that we'd like to have you review and approve for us to move forward with is based on providing high-skill, high-demand, high-wage jobs and a career pathway, which is life sciences. And life science is a very encompassing career pathway. Starting in the high school, students would earn a diploma upon graduation and the ability to leave with a 60-credit associate's degree. And Dr. Rose, if you'd like to speak to anything, you can please jump in anytime you'd like to.
Keep going.
But at this-
Go ahead. No, you're doing great.
Thank you. So this option is the continuing entry into the workforce and a continuation in college degrees, so they can move forward from the associate's degree to a bachelor's degree to a master's degree and so forth and so on. This gets them leaving high school with a high school diploma in hand and an associate's degree upon the 12th grade graduation. Our collaboration will allow the sharing of resources of buildings, facilities, key equipment for adolescents and adults, increasing the institution's capacity to serve the community at a, at a greater need across the board of extended timeframes without the regular school day. Our collaboration joins the county's premier educational institutions and makes it possible to offer a dual-degree program that provides a college education. And the key here, as Dr. Rose pointed out so aptly in our meetings, debt-free.
Wow.
This is a highly sought-after opportunity that has been requested by our students and our parents, and continually is brought up in, in meetings. And Dr. Rose has worked with us, with his team, to work on developing dual enrollments and this program. So to quickly just move together with this, this brings the power of PCTI and student population and the power and educational opportunities within the county community college to serve as one program moving forward. To explain a little bit about Securing Our Children's Bond Act and the reason for a bioscience or life sciences program, my goal was to kind of look at what was the act driven towards, and it was about unmet need. And our life sciences applications, if you can see on your screen, 1,078, which is about a third of our total application pool per year. And the year I have up is 2019, 2020, the school year. That was the applications, 3,308 applications received, 1,395 students were accepted, 1,936 waitlisted. And again, out of all of those applications, one-third were for life sciences careers. So we've identified that as our highest unmet need through our admissions data. And approximately all programs within the county are being filled in the vocations and trades that we teach, but that unmet need is greatest life sciences. Biotechnology is one of the highest-paying subsectors within the life science industry. That's why we chose it as our partnership. Starting salaries associated with increased earnings begin at the associate's degree level. This is a pathway that's scaffolded to earn and learn opportunities, meaning they can come into it from the high school, end up in a co-op working in high school, attain their associate's degree, exit into the workforce, go to night school for a bachelor's, masters, and so forth and so on if they choose. And this provides the opportunity to continue our career in college readiness and pathways to prosperity initiatives. A little bit about some of the occupations. Again, you can read through the list. If you have any questions, please ask. I'm just going to give you the overview. These occupations are diverse in the area of biotechnology. They're all encompassing health and safety, food security, quality of life, and long-term wellness. And that's the overview or the umbrella that sits on top of biotechnology. As you can see, the list is extensive, and as we know it, it will continue to grow with career opportunities that we haven't even yet imagined. The pandemic has brought to light many concerns, and as, as it was stated in the beginning, Mr. De Nova, when you brought up the, the Rutgers professor, I thought that was a good point to kind of make that connection. We're grateful for what he has done for the county and that opportunity to test individuals to reduce this spread of the pandemic. But the pandemic has brought to light many concerns, pathology, vaccines, food insecurity, and research. The heroes of this unprecedented time in our history have been those engaged in every level of life sciences and careers. Biotechnology and life sciences innovate, cure, and transform lives, giving us all hope for the future. In this case, a quick outline, we have a little bit about biotechnology industry in northern New Jersey. And again, our data is all coming out of the Department of Labor and our data for students' needs that are unmet within the county. Again, the highlighted region is northern New Jersey, including Passaic County. And half of all New Jersey life sciences industries exist in the northern New Jersey counties that are listed in your graphic. The average wage for the counties with life sciences-related industries is above the statewide average, with this sector earning on approximately $80,270 a year salary. A little table that we put together for you was to show the difference in earnings. And so you can get an idea, this is the biotechnology industry. This is the employment change predicted for the next 10 years, 2019 to 2020, sorry, 2029. And we highlighted out the high school diploma, which is when a student would normally graduate PCTI, ready for a career, without going off to college, would be earning $37,930 as a salary. And by earning that associate's degree, would be earning $54,900, which is a total of $17,010 on average more by having that degree when they exit high school. And biotechnology's employment and employment and that growth for the next 10-year period shows stable growth of hiring individuals that hold associate's degree, as you can see in that center column with 6.2. That is one of the major growth areas, individuals with associates. Again, as we look at this, combining PCTVS's exemplary graduate, graduation rate with the aligned associate degree will increase the number of county residents receiving a college degree. And this is essential, because in most cases, students go to a community college, take some classes, and move to their next level, sometimes not completing their degrees at any institution. This will guarantee a completed degree upon high school graduation. This degree is essential in raising the entry-level wage for our resident graduates. The collaboration will provide a debt-free college education for those students. And that's an essential component that I don't think can be matched anywhere else. Our current, go back for one second. The collaboration and joint venture in biotechnology will share facilities, share staff, share training equipment, and reduce long-term costs and provide greater opportunities for community engagement by extending the day and weekend educational offerings to residents of all ages. It's an essential component of how this basically works in the scale of economy by joining our groups, our two institutions. There is an orthographic photo that's now on your screen of the existing site, including the proximity of each campus's facilities. And in the top right-hand corner is the PCC, Public Safety Academy. And then below that is the campus of PCTI. You'll see a small green barrier of trees between them. And so we'll move forward, and you can see that that's the proximity of the campuses. We are now going to give you an idea of how close they are by showing you their, their physical locations of the Public Safety Academy at the top of your screen in the center. To your middle right would be the PCTI STEM Academy. And then the PCTI FX Wing on the lower-left portion. That would allow the population of all students on this campus to be served through the college programs. Our next orthographic view would outline the proposed construction that would connect the campuses. If given approval, we would move forward with applying for the Bond Act, which would create the new state-of-the-art biotechnology facility. Floor plan and elevation drawings of a four-story building, including the state-of-the-art labs and instructional space being proposed, is on your screen now. And this gives you a simple option of understanding that this would be a scientific laboratory setting, an academic classroom with flex space for CTE training. And by New Jersey Administrative Code, all students in the county are guaranteed throughout and all, throughout the whole unit, sorry, throughout the whole state of New Jersey, are guaranteed the right to apply to, and if accepted, attend a county vocational school. And this is given as an opportunity to each student within the county. As we get to the end of the presentation, I would just like to make a quick summation. The Bond Act, which is securing our children's future, as it stated, provides up to $25 million bond offerings for school districts to expand their CTE offerings. There are also $40 million offerings. Our goal was to shoot for a $25 million cost, and with the scale of economy, being able to build the opportunity to have this joined by the campuses of two schools. Again, 25% of that amount of the 25 million would be the requirement that we would ask the county commissioners to support through a county bond. And that is the overview of Securing Our Children's Future Together. We look to partner with Dr. Rose and with the county to make this happen as the greatest opportunity for the future of the county as we move forward. If there's any questions, feel free, or Dr. Rose can answer or add in.
Let me question.
Go ahead.
How many students would be able to take part in this program? And at what year in the high school would they be able to, I, I, like, take part in it? Like, would it start freshman year?
Yeah. And actually, can I add to that? Because maybe you guys can answer together. My question was, it's health and life sciences at PCTI. There's the biomedical track at the STEM Academy. How does this relate to both of those and to those two separate schools?
Those are two great questions. Thank you, Commissioner Lazara and Commissioner Bartlett. Just, I'll make two quick comments. Each one of our programs requires what's called a classification of instructional program. And the Department of Education would never let us use the same classification of instructional program across multiple programs. So each one is different. Biotech, different than biomedical, which is more of a biomedical engineering program at STEM. And our Academy of Health Sciences at PCTI is more of a general services program to support medical industry or medical trades and professions. So this is a completely different SIP code or a classification of instructional program based on the Department of Labor. And Commissioner Lazara, your, your statement requesting the information. So this would be an incoming freshman class. This program would be, if given the green light, to move forward and apply. Remember, we're applying for a competitive bond. This is a competitive bond we're applying for, and we're asking for your support, would then allow us to put the building in place for probably the 2023 or 24 school year, which would then intake up to 200 freshmen. And again, 200 freshmen a year would give us 800 of that thousand need, unmet need.
Sort of like the STEM Academy, how you phase the classes in.
Correct, phasing into construction. But I would make one quick comment, and Dr. Rose and I have had this conversation before, Commissioner Lazara, and that is this. Once the building is up, the, the community college will have access to do adult programs, and those programs will be running the minute the doors open. The high school programs will take place during the day, will be phased in year after year after year for four years.
Okay. Thank you.
Does that answer any question?
It does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, let me just add, go ahead.
So I, I want to, so we're talking about a third school on the combined campus.
No.
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 It would, it would be a program under the current school district.
Correct.
Not, not a separate high school at this point, no.
That's correct.
And again, this, this, this process, Commissioner Bartlett, deals with the fact that this is a unique program that aligns with an associate's degree. So it's different and unique than any current program we have. And I've had this conversation with many parents. We've had parents from the STEM program, we've had STEM parents from PCTI that have requested information about dual enrollment opportunities. Some of them are with Seton Hall. We have about 12 to 14 different schools that are higher institutions of higher education that we align with. This is a specific program with PCC, which has a current biotechnology associate's degree in place.
Wow. Some direction.
I have a question for Dr. Rose. Yeah.
We've put a lot of thought into this, and we've been working to develop a plan to have it produced, so that you can look at it and hopefully give us the green light to move forward.
I think Dr. Rose wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, Dr. Rose, I'm sorry.
I have a question for Dr. Rose.
Yeah, I was just going to say, you know, this, this has been in, in the works for about 20 years, this bond referendum. You know, it, it took the unique combination of the current governor, the Senate President, and the Speaker, who all saw, you know, the wisdom of, this is a path we've got to go down in the future. I mean, we need to support vocational education. And the only way it's going to work is, is if we have a pathway for these students, you know, to, to, to go all the way. This idea of getting an associate degree while you're in high school, you know, is, is, it's a game changer for, for a place like Passaic County. And we've just entered into an agreement with Ramapo College, where students are going to be able to do the third year here at PCC at our rates. They're going to be able to stay for their junior year at, at, at our place, and then do one year at Ramapo to get a, to get a bachelor's degree. So, you know, this is going to mean students in Passaic County are going to be able to pretty much get a debt-free education and cost very little to get a college degree.
Uh, Dr. Rose?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. The Public Safety Academy, you have a lot of things going on there over the years.
Yeah.
It's a very busy facility. How much, I mean, I'm sure you, you thought it out, but what's the maximum capacity that you can, you can take on at the Safety Academy and not impact what your current operation is there?
Well, this, this would, this would not have an impact on our academy. That's the good news about it. This, this freestanding building will be able to, you know, do the entire high school program during the day, and then we can program for adults after that.
Okay.
So it's, it's fine. And, you know, I had to choose, is this building, you know, does not, because we have to, we don't need to build a gym, we don't need to build a cafeteria. This is pure academic space that's going into this building.
And it won't interfere with, sorry, Director, it won't interfere with the Office of Emergency Management, which is up there also, correct?
It's not going to. We would not do that.
Have to ask.
Commissioner James, I think it would enhance the program up there because of some of the opportunities afforded by the instructors in the programming, to even do some bioterrorism pieces and other activities that could be involved in science.
Oh, listen, you had me at what Ramapo College did. I, I was on before Dr. Rose spoke. Now I'm 100% convinced. This is a, this is a godsend. This is really a, a good thing for Passaic County, and it's a great thing for the students of Passaic County. How can we not do this? It's a great, great presentation. So thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone know yet how, if we were lucky enough to get the $25 million grant with the county bond for $25 million, similar to the way we did it with the STEM Academy?
Now, you, you would just be, I think the way this is, one's going to work is more like the other bond that the state would actually bond, they're three-quarters of it.
I, I'm having trouble hearing you. I don't, if, maybe if we could ask if people are not speaking, if they could go on mute, but.
What, what I believe is going to happen is the state's going to bond the three-quarters of it, and the county would just have to put in the match of the 25%.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Director, through you. I'll just jump in, Pat, if you don't say anything. Okay. So I had a couple of questions at PCTI. First off, I, I think it's a great idea. I, I love the idea about it. But I'm a little worried for a couple of reasons. First and foremost, when we decided to move in favor of the STEM Academy, we got a lot of pushback from the municipalities, and we got a lot of pushback from the local school districts on two main fronts. We got a lot of pushback from the local school districts on two main fronts. Uh, the first was the increased size is going to hurt especially the regional schools. Think in Manchester in particular. Lakeland also got impacted. As we know, all of those schools have to send tuition, um, with their students. The money follows the kids, which, which I'm going to agree with, 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 by the way. But it is going to have an impact on those schools. Um, and the second reason is, is the type of students that you are taking. Now, um, PCTI, traditionally, I want to say the mission around a vocational education, and even the philosophy or idea of vocational education, isn't that, um, it's stopping a student from going to college, but it's providing a student an opportunity who may not go to college to have the opportunity to go directly into the workforce, having received a vocational training, um, a certification, a certificate, that's going to allow them to demand a higher salary. Um, at the point that I'm seeing us moving into is we're moving away from the traditional vocational trades and more so into the trades that require additional educational attainment, meaning an associate's degree, a bachelor's degree, and so forth, and away from those certificate certification programs. Also, as an impact or a result of that, the students that are going there, um, have to, it, it, the admissions process are creaming the students, the best students from those districts, and are limiting the opportunities for students who really want to go into a traditional vocational shop and not, uh, giving them the opportunity to do those in the future. Now, the main reason why the county got into the business of education, right, why we have a vocational institution is because we felt the need that there were, um, skilled tradesmen who were missing in our county. So it was, uh, in our favor as a county to build those, uh, skill sets amongst our population so that they can then come and serve in those places. Plumbers, electricians, uh, HVHC, so forth. Um, I'm seeing limited opportunities for those students, um, and an expanded role for kids who are going to, and rightfully so, go on to college and probably not come back and, uh, and, and serve, uh, in, in that capacity. My main issue is the impact on the local districts. Um, what would this do to a Manchester, a Lakeland? Um, and then also, how are we, uh, making sure that we're providing equitable opportunities for all students to apply? And that we're just not taking the 4.0, 3.8 students at PCTI, and now it becomes a campus of only students who, uh, are, you know, got straight A's, uh, all throughout school?
Okay, you'd like me to address that, Commissioner Best? Uh, Dr. Rose, I'll step in?
Yeah.
So Commissioner Best, as, as you've spoken with us before, and as a proud graduate of PCTI, uh, I know you've, you've, uh, supported us greatly with that, that insight of how you feel about the education you received here. Again, a couple of quick things. One is, is our trades are filled with students, and we've increased those opportunities based on Perkins Five, which is the new federal mandate for funding vocational trades, requires a number of things. One, it requires those students to now have apprenticeship opportunities or college. They can have either one of those. Our programs of study, which we've all moved to, have a level of either a college-level, um, association of dual enrollment. It has either an apprenticeship and additional certification. The difference with this life sciences and biotech, and, and again, I would go back, we're not looking at a student that is the cream of the crop. I think if you were to look at our students across the board, we have the range of students at every grade level, including meeting the need of 450 special education students still in the county. But as I would make that quick statement, these biotech jobs are starting with an associate's degree to make our students competitive in those regions of northern New Jersey where they can earn that $80,000 salary. That is the requirement. That requirement is the associate's degree. And the State of New Jersey Department of Education, under Perkins Five, has mandated, we look at our special populations. We make sure that we're bringing in diversity. We make sure that we're giving them college opportunities and that we're giving them the, the opportunity to be able to earn that high-income, high-skilled wage. So again, this is all in alignment with what we've been doing as educational lung, and we have not forgotten, and we do continue to support the traditional trades. And I'm proud to say that those programs are alive and thriving here at PCTI.
Yes, I agree with, uh, we have never abandoned the traditional trades at, uh, in Passaic County. Other counties have.
So, so Commissioner Best, I thank you for your concern. I hope that addressed some of it. If there's anything more, I, I feel free. I would like to answer that if you do.
It totally did. And, and again, I, I don't think that, uh, I, I'm saying that we've abandoned it. Um, however, uh, I don't think that we're putting enough emphasis and effort on it moving forward. Uh, so, so again, when we're talking about the opportunity to expand vocational trades, when I'm thinking vocational trades are different than what you guys are thinking for vocational trades, and I understand that the industry is moving in that direction, but there's still a huge need for that. Um, there's a demand for that. Um, and I also think that there's a need for that and a demand for that, uh, here in Passaic County. Um, also, just in terms of the admissions process as well, um, I, I do have some concerns. I know this is a little off topic, but I do have some concerns around the admissions process. We could talk offline about that. But, um, you know, if a student is going into a carpentry program, um, you know, I, I, I don't think it's fair that they have to compete against, you know, if they're really interested and really want to work with their hands, um, they shouldn't have to have a 4.0 grade point average and test, you know, through the roof on the, on the standardized test. Because Passaic County Tech's campus and the experience that you guys are able to provide is second to none in the county of Passaic. I truly feel that is an amazing campus. It, it, it rivals some of the universities out there. Beautiful campus, outstanding programs, outstanding facilities, faculty, great faculty members. Because you're able to do that, students want to go to the school. Some students don't even care what program they're going into, right? They just want to be there. And the way that the admissions process is set up is the students who need a PCTI, right? Who need to go into a carpentry, who need to go, and I'm just using that example, who need to go into culinary arts, don't have that opportunity because now they're in competition with a straight A student who is scared that they're not going to be able to get into the STEM or engineering program. So their guidance counselors and their advisors and teachers are telling them to apply for those construction trade shops so that they don't have to, uh, so, so it's easier to get into a construction trade shop, um, versus a, uh, a STEM shop. But again, that's a little off topic. I'm sorry for taking it there, but, but, but that was just a concern I had to bring to the table.
I got this. Uh, well, thank you, Commissioner Best. And, and it is a little off topic, but we'd be glad to speak to you, as you said. We will get an opportunity to speak to you about these issues. We have no problem with that. All right? Uh, if you want, your office could reach out to me, or we, we could reach out to you, whichever you'd like. Thank you.
Commissioner Best, I just want to make a comment. As a former president of a loc, of the, uh, of a Contractors Association, I know the need as a, of the trades, what's needed in the future. We're, we're going to be short, there's going to be a shortfall of millions of skilled trade labor. And now it's important for the school, and the school's going to continue to go down that route because every day the trade's getting older and we're losing our, our skilled people. As this COVID hit, one of the things some of my crews asked me when people were staying home because of automation and skill work, is what are we going to do? And my answer to them was, until we can figure out how to build a building from home, we all have to go to work. So the, no matter what they do with automation, we need to be there because nothing will work until we put that building up. So I can assure you, we are not losing sight of the trades. That's, that's dear and near to our hearts. And, and Commissioner Best, I just want to add in two, two things. Um, Commissioner Lozara is present and, uh, Dr. Rose is present. Uh, Commissioner Lozara and I just, I just started working with her on the County Youth Services Commission, where we're providing opportunities for students that are adjudicated, to give them a career path. And we're bringing those students in a Twilight Program to the campus, um, and that is a grant-funded program with juvenile detention initiative alternatives. Um, so that's showing that we're still true to what we do. We're giving those students those hands-on certificates, whether they are the best student at a 4.0 or the student who's, uh, a low, likely to be incarcerated. We're working at both levels to make sure we're pro, providing equitable instruction and equitable education services. With Dr. Rose, we're in a current program, and this is a, a true trades program. We have women and minorities in welding, which is NNJ Weld, which has been an extremely successful program, providing women and minorities within the county of Passaic the opportunity to learn welding skills and get certifications to be employed in the trades. And again, those are to post-secondary adults, um, but we are at every level. We're addressing every need in the county through our facilities. And I do understand your concerns, and again, we would, we would entertain those in another conversation. But we are certainly, uh, listening to the community and providing the services that are necessary at every level. And I thank Commissioner Lozara for our support with the Youth Services Commission and Dr. Rose with the grants from, uh, our post-secundaries.
All right, let me add one more thing to that, if you will. Um, you know, the One Stop, um, has programs, we have programs with some unions, uh, you know, for, um, the mechanics, Princeton, the machinist union, uh, and I have talked to Dr. Rose many times about this.
Yep.
But I think the role of the One Stop has to change dramatically, uh, in terms of what we provide, and that's working with the state. Because all of those, uh, all of those years are approved by the state. So I think if we have conferences with the college and with our high school, um, we might be able to improve, improve uh, opportunities for people to get training that, uh, you know, you're, you're, you're talking about TJ, where, um, you know, skills can be learned elsewhere, and we have the funds to do it. So, um, you know, I, again, I'm very supportive of this. I, I don't agree with everything TJ said, although I get it. But I think that there's ways to improve everything we do, and one of them should be the One Stop with our educational systems.
And, and just to add my two cents, um, as, you know, a former educator, um, you know, we look at kids and we can't put them all in the same silo. There's so many kids with different interests and different abilities that it sounds to me, and I'm pretty su, I know this is to be a fact, PCTI is trying to meet the needs of so many different types of students, as you are, Dr. Rose. And as long as we keep doing that, I, I don't see how we could go wrong. I, I, I can't, you know, again, we have kids that are going to go to college and kids that are going to work with their hands. As long as they're all happy and we meet their needs, that's what's important. That's all.
Thank you.
Director, if I could just, uh, can I clarify, uh, because I, I thought I understood, but maybe I misunderstood. Um, this new, uh, this new campus, uh, uh, and, and this new building, uh, are we adding to the student population of PCTI? Or are we simply giving another option to those students who want to enroll in this, in this life sciences program?
We're being. We, um.
So, so Commissioner Rocker, thank you very much for your question. One is, we're not creating a new campus. We're joining the two campuses that are in such close proximity to each other. And this would be providing new, new opportunities to students at 200 students per year in the coming three to four-year period, if this is approved and the building is constructed. Remember, the process for bidding, construction, and building, uh, would not have a building in place for several, and I say several years, but two to three years. Um, and then that student population would come in slowly. Uh, again, Dr. Rose would be able to use that facility for the college. And as Commissioner James had said, One Stop Programming, as, uh, Commissioner Lozara said, some of our youth programs, this facility would then allow other alternative programs to exist when they're not running the regular daytime high school program. Does that make sense?
No, that, that, that makes sense, but, but you are saying in capacity, at capacity, we're adding 200 students to what is already, as far as I understand, the largest.
200 a year, total of 800, correct?
Right.
Just want to make that clear. It's 200 per year. Over the course of four years, we'd be phasing in with a total of 800 students. I, I just want to make a quick note, Commissioner Rocker, as I see you're calculating, I, I see it already in, in your, in your, uh, your face, that you're trying to put the numbers together. And I'll just make this comment. And again, Commissioner Best, I think this lies a little bit into what we were talking about before, in, in that same line. We have an unmet need in the county of over 1,000 students a year looking for life sciences programs. They're coming to us. We're not going to them and asking them to leave their high school. They're coming to PCTI, they're coming to STEM, they're coming to Passaic County Technical Vocational Schools, and this is an unmet need. That's the whole concept of what this Securing Our Children's Future Bond Act is about. It's addressing the unmet need of students that are not being able to get the education they want in the county they reside in. Either it's based on the program available at the regional or local high school, but it's also the fact that we don't have the space. This, this bond act allows us to build the space to house those students.
No, no, I, 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 I understand, and your arguments, and, and I think the, the, I, I don't think anyone is arguing, uh, and I don't think TJ was either. That the goal of this is, is, is perfectly right. I think what, I think what TJ's, you know, looking at, and, and what I'm looking at, and I think we're all looking at, I, I, I hope, is that the school has gotten to a point, you know, we're almost at an inflection point, where we just keep adding to PCTI, you know? And some other counties, like in Bergen County, there are multiple county schools, for one thing. Um, those are also very elite academies, um, uh, but they have slightly different purposes at each. And I, I don't know, you know, if it makes the most sense to have different academies at one campus or to be spread out throughout the county. Um, um, I don't know what that means for public safety in terms of that many students. I mean, it really is a college-like atmosphere at PCTI. Um, um, and, and, and I'm not one to say that that's positive or negative in terms of the numbers, but I do think we need to look at that, per se, um, the size of the campus and the fact that we keep building and adding onto it, um, at the same location. Um, and, and what that, you know, what that means, and whether that's really the most prudent way to go about this, um, uh, in a county as large as ours, and as county diverse as ours. Um, and then I think, you know, I do have the same concerns, and we can have that separate conversation. But being here in Patterson, I do know that a lot of students who come to me and the parents, they say, we'll do any program, we'll do any program to get to PCTI, which is not, which is unfortunate because I would hate to box out the student that TJ's talking about, um, um, that may not be academically gifted, but gifted in other ways and, and wanting to get into the trades, um, and, and this being their best avenue to do so. So I am concerned about that. Um, and, 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 you know, I think we need to continue that conversation. But, but, but that's specifically about the enlargement of an already large campus. Um, I, I do think that's something that we need to, to think about, you know, very carefully.
And just, uh, Commissioner Rocker, thank you for your comments, and, and I just want to address that in two ways. One is, is, this is, and, and my perspective at Dr. Rose is, as we looked at this, this is increasing the facility of the county colleges. This is really the connection of that program. It's an associate degree program. It expands their program and their facility more than it does ours. It's just providing opportunities that students are not able to get. And I think that it's important, and I can go back to saying this, I understand that there is the concern of people saying, well, my child, I'm glad that we hear that people want to go to the county school and not the opposite. It's, it's great news to hear that we're doing a great job, and as Commissioner Best said, we have great faculty, we have great students, we have great outcomes. And those are all incredible opportunities. That unmet need of 1,078 students that are not getting an education in what they want is what we're holding back with this by not giving the bond act.
Hey Ted.
Can I make one more comment, Director, before we stop this? You know, as a Democrat, uh, I absolutely believe that we owe a college education to everybody, and the argument has always been, well, how are you going to pay for it? Well, here we have, uh, either two or three years of college education that is paid for by what we're doing. This is exactly what we're talking about when we're talking about things. The county college, I've said it a million times, is the way to go for kids who really can't afford, uh, a four-year college. So this is a no-brainer, and I'm going to support this all the way.
Thank you, Commissioner James.
Yeah, I, I, I also agree that it's, it's great, but I, I'm also not saying that this is also the only way. I mean, there's other ways as well. Uh, the one thing that I do have an issue with is logistical. Uh, you know, there, it's already a very large campus with a lot of people. It's a, a small road in and a small road out. The winters are even more hard. You're talking about adding another 1,000 people to the school during rush hour period. There's some real logistical issues that, that we have to talk about just in terms of the amount of, uh, capacity that that site could actually hold and that the roads could hold, especially during rush hour traffic, rush hour times, um, during that period. In addition to that, we even go into the busing standpoint, where I know a lot of the local school districts are moving away from providing busing. Uh, and if that's the case, now you're talking about more cars on the road, which increases traffic even more. Again, these, these are just, in the grand scheme of things, I'm for it, right? But these are all the type of issues that we, as elected officials, will have to deal with because we represent multiple constituencies. So we're going to have all types of people asking us these various questions, and we need to be able to have answers for them.
You ready?
Go ahead, Steve.
Commissioner, it's, um, Steve Copper. This, uh, this is a competition that's sort of a unique offering, as Dr. Rose said. I don't see it as just increasing the population of PCTI. as Dr. Rose said. I don't see it as just increasing the population of PCTI. The Bond Act was written specifically for this piece of property. We're unique in the state. We have a college property adjacent to ours. The Bond Act would not afford financing of land. We have land. The Bond Act insists on us connecting to an existing facility. It does not want separate buildings. So that's what led us to this proposition. We have all of that now. And the uniqueness about it is that this CTE, Commissioner Best, is specifically for the trades education. This is what they want. So you're going to see a stronger development. There's a student that go to carpentry, they're going to the biosciences. Now leaves an opening for them. It's not going to deplete, it's going to add on to. And then this is not specifically just for PCTI. The college is going to have a big part of this. It's connected to the Public Safety Academy.
Mr. Coppa, we also have land in Wanacue and Patterson and Passaic as well. You know, so I agree with you on everything else you said, but again, we also have land throughout the county, and the county is a very large place. So I'll just add that point. Nothing says that we only have to offer it in Wayne. You know, we could offer it in other places as well. And again, that's why I'm saying, it's okay to think outside the box. I like what Commissioner Rocker said in terms of a reflection point, because Passaic County Tech will now be the largest high school in the state of New Jersey. We are larger than several colleges and universities in the state of New Jersey. These are things that we have to consider, and I think that we're not doing our due diligence as commissioners if we just go ahead and put a rubber stamp on everything. You know, we do need a diversified approach and looking at all of the various options. And I also think that there's a major component that the community needs to chip in here. Now, just to get the ball rolling and to apply for the grant and so forth, I'm okay with that. But there is going to have to be some serious conversations that we have with all of our various constituents around the impact that this school is going to have.
We appreciate that, and that is a strong statement at the end. We only have until March 1st to supply this application. So if you support us, that's the step that we're going to take next. As I said, it's a competition, and it's pretty stiff. We look at it.
Yeah, let me just say, yeah, it seems that you have been, as always, very creative and very looking for opportunities, and this is everything we like about these kinds of opportunities and finding them. But we could build this extra capacity or build this in Wayne at PCTI, but we could also think about, thinking about transitioning some of the existing programs somewhere else in the county. So we could do both. I mean, I think what we're thinking about is, at some point, at some point, you know, we can't just keep building onto the same school. The need is going to keep growing. It's not going to, it's not going to let. So I really do think we need to think about, you know, the fact that we've had one county campus, a county as large as ours, this law, and it's been as successful as it has. And the fact is actually, the success can be its own problem. When you become too successful and you become too much, it's its own issue. And I think we're going to get that, but we have to think about the future.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Rocker. And just on a quick note, as I would make the comment, and I just wanted to thank Commissioner Best for his support for us to be able to at least apply. And I appreciate the commissioners listening to us. And Commissioner Rocker, Commissioner Best, just one quick point. The scales of economy of joining these two campuses is where we can apply for a $25 million bond and give the most back to the county for the biggest bang for the dollar. If we were to go and build it in a different facility, this would cost, and we can go look at some of the vocational schools that were built recently, Hudson County and in Bergen County, that were upwards of $45 to $150 million. And this is a real extreme circumstance for us to take a small amount, and I say small amount, in terms of $25 million offering by the state of New Jersey to expand this capacity. And again, we do understand, you're right, we are a school district that students love to come to. But this allows us to share services and to be more efficient and effective, and again, operate this campus seven days a week, as many hours a day as need be for every population of every resident. So we appreciate your support. And again, we continue to discuss those concerns of transportation and so on. Remember, this is just a move for us to be able to go forward and apply. If we were to receive it, we would still have two to three years in the planning process, and we can work on logistics of facilities and access to that, as Commissioner Best appointed out.
Right.
Correct.
So at this point, we do appreciate your support. If there's any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
May I ask, do you need something of the county now? Do you need them to consider a resolution of support, or?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. De novo.
That is correct, Mr. De novo. We will need a resolution.
Just that we support you applying for the $25 million.
Correct.
Correct.
So Director, if it's okay with you, I'll add it to my finance agenda tomorrow for further discussion?
That works.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. De novo.
And I think the most impressive part of the presentation, Ted, not once did you call him freeholders.
Thank you. I practiced to make sure we did this correctly. I even did it with Commissioner Lozara in a previous meeting. I made sure that I stayed away from that term, and thank you for noticing.
So, but on behalf of everyone here, okay, in this room, I want to extend our appreciation to the commissioners for taking the time out and to appreciate this type of initiative between Safe Community College and PCTI, and we thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. De novo, you too.
Thank you, Mr. Kosh and Mr. Coppa. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Bye-bye now.
So, Mr. Director, I am worried that Sandy Lozara is currently drowning at the falls. It looks like she's going to go over the top in a barrel. So I'm worried about that. She's in the fall.
I love my Patterson Falls.
So Director, next on the agenda is a presentation by Michael Lysikatos on the Passaic County 2020, 2021. As you recall, last year, in the heart of COVID, we deferred open space grants to 2021. So we're doubling up on the grants that we're giving out. So he has a presentation on recommendations to you all on the 2021 open space applications. So, Mr. Lysikatos, anytime you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. De novo, and good evening, commissioners. Yes, on your agenda tonight is the first round of recommendations for the 2020, 2021 Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund. Great program. The recommendations that are up for tonight are the grants that are under $100,000. There's a total of 10, eight being park development projects and two being historic preservation projects. On your agenda tonight is also a resolution to, that's a public hearing on March 9th, for the remaining 14 applications that are being recommended. But tonight, we'll focus on the 10. There's eight that I'll present, and then two Kelly Raffel will run through on the historic preservation side. I'm just going to bring up the presentation right now. Is it sharing? Is it sharing the one that, I can't see the screen here. Is it a?
We're looking at the, we're looking at the presentation, the slides on the left, Mike.
Okay.
You might want to hit start slideshow.
Yeah, I'm trying to hit a, trying to. It doesn't work here. Let me just close this one.
I do have it all up and ready to go on my end, if you want to.
Yeah, that might, that might work. It was giving me trouble. Looks like it's giving me trouble. If you want to just pop it up, that'd be great. Okay. Just go to the two slides. Okay, so the first of our park development projects, recommendations that we're making is from the Community Association of the Highlands. This is at the Highlands Natural Pool, which is a resource that the Board of Commissioners has invested in a number of times. This is a relatively modest grant award and request that was given to us for the installation of a paper pathway, some additional benches, filter for drinking water, and placement of umbrellas, and some electrical service upgrades that they need for their storage set. So this is a total of $21,237 recommendation we're making for the Community Association of the Highlands, which is one of our nonprofits. Next slide. Our next recommendation is to a new entity, a new nonprofit that's applied to the county, which is the Friends of Patterson Parks. This is on the east side of Patterson, the Roberto Clemente Park. So it's a renovation of an existing playground that's there now. So they're going to be updating the equipment, and they'll be putting in a wood fiber surface. As you can see, the existing condition, some of the playground equipment's a bit dated, and the surface needs some new resurfacing. We're making a recommendation of $75,000 for this application in this round. Next slide. The next two come to us from the borough of Hawthorne. We're making, the first recommendation is for $75,000 for an upgrade to the ban shell facility, which is installation of LED lighting on a pathway. The applicant has provided that the LED lighting would only be on during events. So this isn't something that would be a nuisance to the neighborhood, you know, allow people to safely come to and from the parking lot to the ban shell. Next slide. And then the second recommendation, also for $75,000, is for installation of a new compliant playground for individuals with disabilities. And on an unused parking area right now in the park, all of the pathways and the accessibility is going to be ADA compliant as well, from the information that was provided to us by the applicant. Next one. Our next award is to another nonprofit, the Highlands Nature Friends. This is a series, this is the next in a series of recommendations we've made in upgrades to the new WIS Center, which is also partnered with our County Parks Department in recreational opportunities and educational opportunities. What they'll be doing here is multiple upgrades to facilities at the main WIS Center, but also some other outer buildings. In addition to that, they'll also be doing some improvements to the grounds, specifically removal of problem trees and a well pump upgrade. So this is what they identified as phase one. They identified a number of needs that they have now and in the future, and the $75,000 should help them move along with phase one. Next one. Our next recommendation is in North Haylen. This is at the High Mountain School Playground. This is the third phase of funding recommendation we're making. This should allow them to have the project as a whole and get this out to construction this year. What they're going to be doing is replacing the molds to what's called a poured-in-place surface. It's, you might have seen it, it's sort of a squishy, sort of rubbery surface that goes in to these playground areas. This, again, is the third round of funding for this project, and this should really get them out the door. And I should say, the real focus on our 2021 program was to get as many projects in the ground, to increase that funding, to really get shovel-ready projects out there, not only for the communities to get more assets in these open space and parkland projects, but also to get local contractors working. So we really think this will act not only as a plus for the communities, but also a stimulus to the economy. And the recommendation on this one is $99,999. Next slide. Our next project is in Wayne. So this is Wake's Memorial Park, which is going to be an upgrade to their lighting. Right now, they use metal halide lights, which are very inefficient. They take a while to warm up, and it'll allow them to have more efficient use of their fields, and actually save quite a bit of money on the municipal side. So this is a big investment of $99,999 that'll go towards the municipality and getting this project off the ground, and really result in long-term cost savings for the municipality in maintaining a lot of the great projects, which the commissioners have done a great job over the years in funding a number of open space needs in the township of Wayne. All right, next slide. The next nonprofit award recommendation is to Wayne Littleley. Again, there's ongoing complex improvements that have been happening for this applicant, which has been funded a number of times in the past. This will specifically focus on replacing some of their safety netting down the baselines and also behind home plate. And they'll also be replacing some of the fencing and backstops and bleachers, which are used quite often in their facility. And the recommendation here is $75,000. Next slide. At this point, I'll hand it over to Kelly Raffel, who will go over the two historic preservation projects, and then we'll take any questions that we have.
All right. Good evening, everyone. So we have two historic preservation projects. The first is to the American Labor Museum, also known as the Bottle House. Their project is to restore sort of their foundational wall that surrounds the property, which you can sort of see in the aerial view. It requires, you know, recoding the fencing, repairing the masonry, and repainting. The next slide, please. And then the last recommendation is for the U.S. Animal Quarantine Station. Very excited about this project. The city of Clifton received a larger grant award from the New Jersey Historic Trust to restore the building. So we're going to partner, and we recommended $75,000 to this project. It's for all exterior repairs, window replacement, roof replacement, fixing the faces and soffits. The city is intending to reopen this building on site for their Department of Parks and Recreation. And that concludes the historic preservation projects.
Thank you, Kelly. And I think that concludes our recommendations for this first round of funding. Total, again, is 10 projects for a total of $675,475 for the applications under 100,000. Again, the public hearing is also on your agenda to schedule that for March nights. There'll be 14 more recommendations to the board at that time that we'll run through. At this point, are there any questions from the commissioners?
I just want to, as a director, if you don't mind, as the county commission representative on the open space board, I just want to thank Michael and Kelly for their incredible work under very difficult circumstances. As we know, we know we lost Kathleen Karen in the last year, and she was dearly, dearly missed. And it's incredibly hard thing to take over this kind of undertaking, which is difficult even the best of years, and the entire board and the public who took part in this, it was under difficult circumstances. And so I want to thank them and congratulate them on the work that they did to put this together.
Thank you. I agree with the sentiment. It was Kathleen's not going to be replaced. I think everyone did a great job, including yourself and the Open Space Committee. And we also have our new staff member, Jesse Summers, our landscape architect, who's doing a great job in coming up, getting everything up to speed, and working on getting these grants out as soon as possible. So thank you.
Yeah. I second all of that. Through you, Director, can I just ask a question? And I don't know if it's for Michael or if it's for you, Anthony. Explain to me the timing and the process. I know we didn't do our awards last fall as we ordinarily do. I gather all of these applications were received in the spring of 2020. And then, so what is happening with the 2020 round, excuse me, 2021 round of what would otherwise be an annual application process?
Mr. De novo, did you want me to field that?
Good, Michael.
Okay. Yes, so Commissioner, you're correct. These are the applications that were received in the spring. These are the applications that were received in the spring. So because of just the bandwidth to be able to process through the applications in the spring, it was delayed until the fall. So our normal award is usually around September. It's pushed obviously until the winter and spring here in the new year. And what we did was, we actually were moving the 2021 funding. So there won't be a solicitation in 2021 for our regular grant program. What we did was we moved that funding up and essentially almost doubled the amount of awards where we were able to do in this round of funding. So we'll have projects that are better funded. And as I alluded to earlier, hopefully projects that will be shovel-ready, especially these multiple-phase projects, to really hit the streets and be a stimulus. So there was really a number of layers to moving up the funding and really delaying the next year of grant applications.
Michael, that was because of COVID though, right? A lot of this was delayed because of, I mean, we really couldn't do things that we would normally do, so.
Absolutely. Absolutely. COVID was, was a huge impact. That was the first initial real delay to everything that, we picked it back up at the end of the summer and fall as we were sort of sorting through the COVID situation. And then obviously the passing of Kathleen in the summertime sort of introduced another stumbling block to that end. So, so as we were, we were already on the way to considering, you know, bringing the program back up in the fall and doing a winter and spring award regardless, we wanted to get as much out on the street, like I said, in this, in the springtime, get the movement along.
And we had the, you know, we had the conversation with all of the mayors about what our thoughts were rather than trying to award in 2020. Frankly, no one was going to, you know, we were so late to begin with, nobody was really going to be able to start projects in 2020. So, you know, the fact that we were able to get the 2021 out in essence earlier, everyone seemed to be, agree that that was really the better way to go.
Okay. Fair enough, and I appreciate all that detail. I have one much more granular question, and that's the High Mountain School Playground project. Do we ordinarily fund Board of Education projects and properties? I know we do municipals and nonprofits, but I wanted to understand what's going on.
That's a municipal park.
They took that over from the Board of Education a number of years ago.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We don't have any more questions. Want to thank Michael and Kelly, very informative, a lot of work went into it, much appreciated on behalf of the Board.
Thank you, Director.
Okay, so we will move on. I will make one public announcement, that the portal for appointments for vaccinations in Passaic County at our Modell's mega site is now live. There is about 2,500 appointments available to anyone who is interested. They will go quickly, so I would suggest anyone listening to this broadcast right now.
Tony, when, when did those go live?
Just now.
Okay, all right. I was on it earlier and it was booked already. I was like, wow, okay.
Yeah, it just went live, I think, within the last 15 minutes for you.
Okay, thank you.
So I will, I will now turn it over to Dr. Gungil, who is going to give us our COVID-19 update for this meeting. Dr. Gungil, you're looking well and rested.
Thank you, Mr. De Nova. Good evening, everyone. Here is my current update, or our first update for the year 2021. Next slide, please. So as of yesterday, we have had 45,855 positive cases. And as of yesterday, we were in day 318 since COVID came into our community. Next slide. This is what the Epi curve looks like. And as you could see, since October, our, our numbers have started to increase dramatically. But you see that the spread has been over a wider period of time than it was earlier. And you know that earlier, when everything closed down, we actually stopped the spread dramatically. So this is with us, you know, almost normal in, in the things that we're doing, except a few residual changes that have been made. Even though that's the case, you can also see on the right hand of the Epi curve, you can still see that our numbers, yes, our numbers have declined. When you see little peaks there, those peaks were after Thanksgiving and after Christmas. And, you know, whenever there are opportunities to gather, we see an increase in cases. Next slide, please. We remain at the highest cumulative incidence, and some of the other counties have changed. As you can see, Bergen is not in the top six. Middlesex is there, as is Ocean County. So things are changing. The pandemic is moving south, and it's a good thing for us here in Passaic County. Next slide, please. All right, this is taken from the state website, and this is just showing what it looks like graphically in terms of numbers of cases. So this, this is raw numbers. Bergen still has the most cases, but as you could see, Essex is quickly catching up. Middlesex is on its heels. Passaic County is about 9,000 cases less than Hudson. And the other ones, Union and Ocean, are coming up closer to Passaic County. We're actually seeing a decrease or a decline in cases, as you saw from the Epi curve slide. Next slide. These are our totals as of yesterday, again, 45,858, 55 cases, 1,400 deaths, hospitalizations. And these numbers are cumulative from the beginning of the outbreak. We also, over the last three weeks, we also had one more case of multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, bringing our number from 10 to 11. Next slide, please. All right, this is the breakdown by gender, race, and ethnicity. And as you can see, almost 50% of our cases here in Passaic County were from residents who self-identify as Hispanic. Now, always remember that this data is only a subset, because earlier on in the pandemic, they were not collecting race and ethnicity data. So it's, it's, it's a small subset of what the numbers actually are, which we don't really know. Next slide, please. All right. Cases still continue in our long-term care facilities, but from the last presentation to now, we actually have two less outbreaks in our long-term care. So two of them have been closed, but they're persistent, because obviously with the more vulnerable population, the residents, we are getting more cases. And of course, when staff leaves their place of employment, you know, they aren't necessarily following their recommendations by CVC. So we continue to get cases in our long-term care facilities. Next slide, please. All right, so we continue to test at home, or at-home testing continues with over 23,000 tests administered or at least distributed. And Wayne continues to lead the pack in utilizing the at-home testing program. Next slide, please. Our mobile testing continues with over 37,000 tests performed today. I believe we had another 289. We're seeing a Wayne in the number of people going to our mobile testing sites. So it's something that I'm looking at, because perhaps I need to change what we're doing in terms of mobile testing. Next slide, please. All right, so the big thing today is the vaccination program that, that is happening in Passaic County. The vaccination program for us at Passaic County began on December 31st. Within the county, there are a total of seven sites. Six sites now, actually. The city of Passaic, Patterson, Wayne Township, city of Clifton, all have one site, and Passaic County has two sites. The target population still remains the same. We are told to vaccinate about 70% of our adult population within six months. Next slide, please. Okay, so there's been a lot of confusion regarding who's eligible and who's not. So Phase 1A remains the same, but they have expanded Phase 1A to include first responders and also adults 65-plus and adults 18 to 64 with underlying health conditions. All other parts of Phase 1B and Phase 1C are still in effect. Next slide, please. All right, so throughout Passaic County, as of yesterday, 27,243 vaccines were administered from all sources. So that includes the hospitals, that includes the Rite Aid, and all the different places where people can be vaccinated. For us, for Passaic County, we began again on December 31st. We had 10 different clinics, and we vaccinated 3,098 individuals. Next slide, please. This slide shows, except for the first, the first bar, and I have no idea what happened there. So this, this count the first bar, but the others are all correct. These shows the number of vaccines. Okay, I see another thing. Sorry, I've, I've been a little bit busy. The number of vaccines administered at our site. You can see after the green bar that we have dramatically increased the number of vaccines that we're administering, and that's happening for two reasons. One, we are now at the Modell's mega site, so we have the capacity to vaccinate about 1,200 people. In addition, we were getting more than our, our original allotment. So we're getting an allotment of about 1,000 a week right now, and so we're vaccinating about 500 those times. Again, don't look at the left, I don't know what happened, I didn't get a chance to pick that. Also the, yeah, thank you. Vaccinations by municipality in Passaic County. This slide shows you that Wayne has been the municipality that is utilizing our vaccination sites more than any other. As a matter of fact, the, the number of individuals as of yesterday who were vaccinated from Wayne is 552 residents of Wayne have utilized our vaccination sites. This is followed by Clifton, 382 Clifton residents have used our vaccination site. Then Woodland, Woodland Park is 183. Ringwood, 172. Little Falls, 173. So the only municipality who is really not utilizing the vaccination site as much is Prospect Park, and they have, only 11 residents have used it, and Haylen, 19 residents. So I think it's, it's, we need to get the information out there to residents of those municipalities and help them with the process of registering. And if they're not capable, we have measures that we have put in place to help others. Next slide, please. So this is to give you an overview of the other counties that have used our site. And at this point, I wanted also point out that 94.4% of the people who use, who have been vaccinated at our site are Passaic County residents. I'll repeat that, 94.4% of people who have used our vaccination site are Passaic County residents. That's 2,925 residents. So these are the other counties that are represented. You can see our neighboring county Bergen, as residents have come to our site, and they, it's like 47, 48 of them have used our site, followed by Morris County, and then Essex County. So they're basically neighboring, neighboring counties have come to our site. The interesting thing also is that we've had, I believe it's seven different states have used, 39 total residents from other states have been vaccinated at our site. Sorry, 39 of them are from New York State. And for obvious reasons, again, a lot of people work in the city or live in the city and work out here, and they are entitled to get the vaccine.
So I just want to, for one moment, just talk about that, because the way the site works and the way that the state has directed everyone to, that is, set up a vaccination site. So the preference is Passaic County resident, if you live here, if you work here, or if you study here. So that's the preference that the state wants you to use. So many of these people, obviously, you know, when you register on our site, it will ask you if you're a Passaic County resident. And if it's no, then obviously it's, do you work here or are you a student here? So again, I, I know this has been a, a bit of a bone of contention for some, but I think you'll see, and I think the important number is that 94% are actually Passaic County residents. And I'm sure most of these people on this slide from other counties are people who either work here in Passaic County or, or, or study here in Passaic County. The out-of-state people that Dr. Gungil just mentioned is probably a lot of the people that were actually working for Vault Health, who as you know, we have partnered with at our vaccination site. And many of the nurses and many of the people that work for Vault are from out-of-state. And so many of them are probably the out-of-state residents.
Correct. Thank you. Next slide, please. All right, so this is just a repeat of what I had shared with you before, that, you know, about the vaccine, and that's available if you'd like to, to see it in more detail. And next slide. You know, an interesting thing is that at the vaccination sites, we're not really getting a lot of, as many anxious people as before. Perhaps the first day, we had a higher number or percentage of people who expressed anxiety or anxious about getting the vaccine. But as the days go by, people are flocking us, they are, you know, they're signing up. Older adults who need additional help are coming, they're concerned, and we're really trying to work with them to, to get them registered so that they can be vaccinated. But we've been getting a lot of positive feedback about, about the, the process, and also very few people have, have expressed that they have symptoms from, from getting the vaccine. It might be a soreness in the arm, but really, really not a lot. It's been going very, very nicely. Next slide, please. All right, but our health education campaign continues. It's still important to stay socially distant, to wear a mask, to get tested, to wash your hands. Those things have not changed, and they're not going to change until we have about 70 to 80% protection through herd immunity. So we still have to get that message out, and that's why I include this in my presentation. Next slide, and thank you. All right, is there any questions?
I have a question. Commissioner Duffy, pregnancy, you're pregnant, is there any kind of risk to the fetus if you take the shot?
So the, the recommendation is if a woman is pregnant, they need to see their OB-GYN, because that person will know, you know, the underlying conditions, and they would be able to, to give them advice on whether or not they should take the vaccine.
That'd be case by case.
Yes.
But Dr. Gungil, to be clear, that there is no, there is no evidence in terms of the trials or other things in terms of effects on pregnancy that we know.
Not that I know of, but I don't know everything, so. Not that I know of. And frankly, to be honest with you, the last four weeks has been. Not that I know of. And frankly, to be honest with you, the last four weeks has been, last five weeks, I've been really busy with getting the site up, making sure it's running properly. So I have not been reading a lot about the vaccine anymore. Right now, it's more, how can I have the site running more effectively in order to be able to vaccine? What is my goal of twelve-hundred people per day? So that's, sorry, that's my focus.
If I missed it, I apologize. We, we, we're to the point now where we're giving the second shots to, to folks, right?
Yes.
Do we have a percentage of how many people who we gave the first shot showed up for their second shot?
So tomorrow is the first day for the first group of people. So we don't know yet.
Okay, we haven't, we haven't actually, so we, so tomorrow will be the first day we give the second shot?
Yeah.
Okay. No, and I, I'd be curious to see, I mean, I, the, the, the data I've seen from other sites is that a very large number, you know, ninety, ninety-five-plus percent of the folks who get the first shot come back for the second shot, which is just important just to show that people were talking about side effects, people who are talking about the effects of the vaccine, the folks who've actually gotten it feel well enough and feel good enough about it and, and everything to come back for the second shot. So I'd be, you know, if you're able to keep track of that, I'd be curious to see, you know, what our percentage is. But I think it's important to build confidence in the vaccine and its, and its effect. And, and I just want to say, one thing, number that just stuck out for me in your presentation, which is, which is kind of devastating is that as we approach fifty thousand people infected in Passaic County, it's nearly one out of every ten residents that we have. And knowing that that number includes children, the, the percentage of, you know, adults who are more likely to contract it, it's even, it's a good amount higher than one out of ten. So for those who, you know, who still put out this idea that the virus isn't a big deal, that it hasn't really affected life or anything, you know, blah, blah, blah. In a county as large as ours, it's been quite a challenge and I applaud you as always, you and our administrator and our whole team for taking on this challenge, which we had no preparation for, you know, the first day that it came on our shore. So, you know, a daunting task, but a job well done by, by everybody here.
Thank you. Actually, tonight, as I was just going over my notes, Commissioner, one of the things that I'm going to bring to your attention at the next commissioner's meeting is the number of, of deaths that we've been seeing since November first. And that number is quite startling and, but I wanted to break it down, actually broke it down just by hand with, you know, just looking at the numbers and it's, I think it's something that we need to look at because, you know, we're seeing numbers of, of cases declining, but we're seeing a large number of deaths and I'm a bit, you know, I'm concerned about it. I'm, I'm watching those numbers and next, next month, I'll, I think it's February sixth, February ninth. I'm, I'm going to have those data for you because I, I think it's that we need to put that out there for people to understand that it's not just, you know, a number, but it's, it's a life we're talking about and the importance of getting vaccinated, the importance of getting tested, the importance of excluding yourself from being around other people because you can hurt them even now. So and I take the opportunity to, to, you know, ask and recommend to those who have not yet taken the vaccine and are eligible that it's really, you know, you should really consider it because we are losing people every day in Passaic County and, and it's concerning.
And I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I just want to say, I, I heard someone say, you know, you know, a public official said somewhere else and I think it's important to say here. You know, if you're listening to this, don't be one of the last victims of this virus. You know, if, if this vaccine is as effective as it's shown, you don't want to be one of the last victims of this virus and we hope that everybody's eligible. You know, don't wait your turn. If you're eligible, show up, get vaccinated and, 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 you know, help our progress.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Director, if you don't mind, sir, again, I had an opportunity to visit the site on Saturday. I want to just commend Charlene, her entire team, Tony, his entire team and our partners at Volt, who, who just done an amazing job. I don't think it could have ran any more efficient and smoother. It was a flawless process. Again, I came about a week or so into it. So I know they worked out all of the bugs before I got there, but it, it just, I don't know how it could have been any better. We're doing our part in Passaic County. I am worried about access to the vaccine. I, I know that there is a national shortage. I was watching the news today with some encouragement that the president is going to release whatever stockpile they have, which I don't think is much on the federal level, and that there is going to be an effort to ramp up production of the vaccine. However, in terms of equitable access, I know that there was some conversation about the percentage that Passaic County was receiving based upon our population in respect to other counties based upon their population. And I, I just want to encourage all of our residents to know that our county team is fighting for you. I, I don't want to give too much of the details and too much insider information, but our county team, our administrator, our director is fighting to ensure that Passaic County gets its just due and that our residents are not seen as a throwaway piece of the state of New Jersey, but we're put in the forefront and that our lives and that our health and our safety means just as much as some of our neighboring counties as well. We've done this process right. We've opened our doors to everyone, even though the counties of Bergen and Essex have excluded outside residents from receiving. It makes me want to say we need to do the same thing, but that's not what the rules currently tell us we can do. We're following the process, we're following the rules. We would like to give preference to our county residents, which I think we are doing and the system's running smooth. But again, there's a shortage of vaccines and our team is fighting each and every day to make sure that we get more. Mr. De Nova, I don't know if you want to add any more information. I was actually pleasantly surprised to hear that there's an additional twenty-five-hundred vaccination slots that have opened up today. I'm, I'm sure before this meeting ends, they'll all be gone.
Yes, and, and again, I, I know a few more people jumped on the meeting, so I'll just say it again that the appointment portal for Passaic County is open currently. There is about twenty-five-hundred or so appointments available, which is twice as many as we've been able to open up in the past. It's over the next two weeks. It is www.pasaiccountynj.org/covidvax. If you're listening, maybe you could, maybe we could throw that up on the screen at some point in time as we start this meeting so that people who are watching could, could see the, the website. Fantastic, if it's possible.
For folks who are watching on Facebook, I, I commented in the comments on our live video with the link to our page and I did double-check. As Anthony said, it is live right now.
And I just like to share.
And we have, there you go. That's what it'll look like when you, when you go to www.pasaiccountynj.org/covidvax. There it is. So that is live right now, Micah, and as you could see, there are still appointments left. So please tell your friends, your neighbors. If you have elderly neighbors who are not tech savvy, please help them fill out the form. That is obviously the biggest hole statewide is trying to get to the senior population. We are doing the best that we can here in Passaic County. You could imagine, we receive thousands of phone calls a day from, from people who are having difficulty getting on the site for a variety of reasons, mostly that they just aren't tech savvy. So we've been trying to run a list of, of those people and helping them when we can. And the biggest struggle that we have is the lack of vaccine. I will commend the Director Lapore. We, we had a meeting last week with the Governor's Office. We were, where we were told the number that of vaccines that Passaic County would get. And he immediately got on the phone and was able to get Passaic County a few more, not a lot, a few more. But again, I, sometimes it's the squeaky wheel and, and as Freeholder Best said, that we're going to continue to fight to get as many vaccines. We, we, we did almost six-hundred vaccinations on Saturday and it went without a hitch. You know, you can't help but feel proud and I'm sure all of you have received emails from people who were there, the Facebook comments of people who were there. Obviously, the Facebook comments for people who don't get an appointment are not always as flattering, but the people who have come to the site, whether it's their first interaction with a sheriff's officer, and I can't thank Sheriff Birdnick and his team enough for everything that they are doing. It is remarkably organized and no one is standing outside for hours. They get called in and whatever time it takes them to get to their car, to the front door, that's about the only time they're spending outdoors. Saturday, the first appointment was at nine o'clock and at nine-thirty, that first person was walking out the door with their second appointment. And as everyone who has been there or knows, that includes a fifteen-minute period where you sit so the doctors can observe in case you have any adverse reaction. So the site can't be running any better than it is and kudos to Dr. Gungill, her staff. Again, many volunteers from our, from our MRC have, have volunteered and the partnership that we have with Volt Health is spectacular. They are great partners in all of this. They understand the mission and they understand what Passaic County needs to do for its residents and they, you know, they, they rarely disappoint if ever. So again, kudos to everybody who, who is part of that, that success story.
Steve Orsini, I just don't want to forget Steve, I'm sorry.
Steve Orsini, you know, his, his staff, I mean, on and on and on, Shari from purchasing, you know, the, the list goes on. You know, there are as many people behind the scenes making sure that it, that it works. And again, I, I would give out a, a shout-out to Mr. Mendelbaum, Mendelbaum and Mendelbaum who own the building, who have given the, the county the use of that building at no charge. His, his, his thanks is knowing that he helped people during this pandemic. And I, I think in the world that we're living in right now, where we seem to be more divided than ever, to have someone willing to do that is pretty incredible. So again, we thank them for, for, for their charity and their kindness and, and their partnership as well.
I have a question for Dr. Gungill.
Excuse me, one second, Director. So I know some people try that portal and they, and they, and it appears to be locked, they're locked out of it. What I recommend to people is to close the browser, restart it and then click on it again. Or if you go to a, to our Facebook page, click on it from our Facebook page. That seems to be a, a, a better way to do it. Okay, I'm sorry, Director.
Dr. Gungill, are you still there?
Yeah.
Okay. Two questions. Question number one, I've been getting a lot of questions regarding the second shot. We are not providing the second shot for someone who got their first shots outside the county.
So we recommend that they go back to where they got their second shot and the reason is this. We are being allotted shots based on the numbers that we did for the first shot. So if we gave out five-hundred shots, the state is providing us with five-hundred shots for the second dosage when that time comes. So if people start coming and they did not receive their first shot from us, we will not have sufficient for those people.
Okay. And the, the other inquiries that I'm getting regarding our shut-ins, is there any plan or is it in place or sometime in the future to address the issue of shut-ins? Where people that just don't have computers, don't come out of their homes. Is there any plan for that, to bring the vaccine to them?
Yes, absolutely. So, so here is the thing, right? Right now, the people who we are vaccinating are people who, who are at highest risk. And risk is defined right now as people who can come and, come in contact with someone else who has COVID-19. The person who is shut in is not going to have the same risk as the person who is going out to work. Right? So that, so those are some of the things that are behind the decisions that are made regarding who would get a vaccine. Now, many of the shut-ins meet other criteria for getting the shut, the shots. And we are discussing, not just in Passaic County, but throughout the state, how are we going to help those individuals? We have some ideas and not, not just the shut-in, but there are, there are also people who are not confident or comfortable in using the internet for this kind of work. It's a little bit, there is, there is some inequity there. And so we're talking about that. We're, we're looking at ways that we could help people to get registered. And we actually do some things. I just don't want to, you know, go into much detail on it, but we do help people who are not able to do it themselves and we have plans to do it even further. So as soon as more vaccines become available and as soon as the people who are on the front lines have received their vaccines, we will be able to, we're, we're, we are working on and we'll be able to institute some other parts of this vaccination plan. For example, you know, we have the, the at-home testing, right, for the testing part and we have the mobile testing for the testing part. We could just transfer or we could change the, the mobile testing to mobile vaccination. So that's one very simple way that we could institute change to get to other people out there. And the shut-ins, there, there are things that we've discussed in the past. Actually, we have plans that, that includes people who, who go to shut in their homes. But, you know, we have to really firm that up and we have to have vaccine in order to make it happen. But I want people to rest assured that we are very aware of that gap and that we are addressing that gap to help them.
And, and again, I think the important thing of, of that answer is it all hinges on vaccine.
Right.
Right? So right now, the, the demand is far greater than the supply. So once that, once the supply hopefully becomes, you know, endless, then we'll be able to look at different ways to, to provide vaccinating, vaccinations to, to our residents. And, and again, I think what Dr. Gungill just said was exactly, exactly how we pivoted with testing.
Thank you.
Mr. Director, last thing, if you don't mind. I'm sorry, I know we're monopolizing time here. But I actually had a concerned resident reach out to me and was so impressed by the amazing job that the volunteers was doing that they offered to buy everybody lunch tomorrow. So I wanted to give Christina Scano a shout-out. Ms. Scano is the leader of a charter school, John P. Holland Charter School at Patterson. She got her vaccine, her, her family got the vaccine and they were so impressed that they wanted to buy lunch for everybody, so they're going to do that tomorrow. I know that there may be some other people out there who wants to lend a helping hand. Please reach out to any of us on social media and we'll help you coordinate something. They're doing a great job there. They, they barely take a break. Those nurses and those staff, they're, they're just amazing. Sheriff officers outside in the cold welcoming everybody. They're doing a great job. Least we can do is offer them a cup of coffee or something hot to eat. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Director.
Alrighty.
And Micah's wife today baked cookies for everybody. Thank you, Micah.
Oh, just a note before I go, just to remind people that the second shot tomorrow will be in Totowa, not at the Model's. This is the last time we'll be in Totowa and I just want to make it clear because there was some confusion today. So tomorrow, we'll be in Totowa to do the second vaccines for the first two-hundred-and-fifteen people who came to our site. Thank you.
Could I just ask, do we notify them some other way or is it just this that's going to tell them to go to Totowa?
No, no, no. They, they've received at least two emails thus far.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any, any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, Dr. Gungill. We'll move on to county commissioner reports. Deputy Director Bruce James. We'll move on to county commissioner reports. Deputy Director Bruce James.
Director, did we skip proclamations?
There are no proclamations.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
I can make one if you like. Wizard of Oz proclamation. I just want to, I want to actually thank Mr. Denova and Charlene and everybody who was up at the site. Everybody raves about the way that this works, and your kindness is not unnoticed. And I keep saying it, that you save lives, and I really thank you for everything that you do. And given the hour, and we still have a lot to get through, that's all I'm going to say tonight. But thank you, guys. Really, really, really thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay. Commissioner Assad?
I think we've had enough tonight, so I have no report. Thank you.
You're my favorite. Commissioner Bartlet?
Hey, come on, he's your favorite?
No.
That's fine. I second all the good things that have been said, but I won't waste any more time on them. I do want to mention that through our team, which is the North Jersey Rail Coalition and NJTPA, we're in the progress right now, and this went out on our social media account earlier today. What's going on is an ongoing virtual public meeting about rail and transit access in Passaic County. It's your chance to literally put pins on a virtual map, explain where you go, why you go there, and what kind of transit needs you have. This is part of an ongoing process, both as advocates, Passaic County, and our Congressman Bill Paschrell, and a lot of our local allies in our county and nearby have been advocating rail connection from Patterson to Hackensack and onward to the Hudsonburg and Light Rail. It also relates to our efforts to develop bus rapid transit that connects Patterson to Newark and elsewhere. All of this is driven by what people say that they need. And I know that not as many of us are getting out as much as we used to, but keep transit in mind and take a moment to participate through our social media on this. Let us know where we should be trying to get that federal funding and trying to make those investments in transportation transit here in Passaic County and wherever it is you may go when you use transit. So thank you very much.
All right. I just want to let everyone know, Commissioner Bartlet, you're doing one hell of a job for Passaic County on the NJTPA. I can't think of a better person up there fighting for all the transportation projects that this county deserves and needs. All right, Commissioner Best?
I talked enough today, no report. Let's just pray for our country, state, and county.
Thank you. Commissioner Duffy?
I have the same sentiment as Commissioner Best. I also wanted to send a, Dr. Gungil, what a great job our whole team is doing. Thank you, though.
Okay, Commissioner Lazara?
Well, I just want to thank everybody for everything they're doing. John, I know you're doing a great job at NJTPA. And Charlene, I was at the site on Saturday, and it went so smoothly. And I know everybody's working so hard to make it be the best that it can be. And Anthony, you know, you are just a phenomenal leader, and we just work with you so well, as we all do. And your team, your COVID team is amazing, what you do. We're so very proud of you, all of you. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. And my own report took notice tonight when my colleagues were in a lively discussion and debate regarding anticipative plans at Passaic County Tech and Passaic County Community College. And I was quite impressed by all of you who weren't afraid to speak your mind, weren't afraid to take a position that you believe in. You were respectful with one another. You stood your ground. And I think that bodes well for the rest of the year for all of us. And people of Passaic County should know that individually and collectively, we always have the best interests of the residents of Passaic County. So quite proud of all of you tonight, and very proud to be the director of this distinguished group. Okay.
If I may, you're a great pick as director. I know it's a lot of big shoes to fill. But what happened to your head?
Director, may I make one more shout out, because once you start thanking people, Dan Lanive, our in-house sign maker, he's been incredible with, you know, being so responsive for all of the signage that we need up, not only the testing sites and now the vaccination site. The poor guy, I was texting with him all weekend, interrupting his family time, and I feel badly that I was doing that. But if I don't do it then, my age, I forget. So I just want to shout out to Dan because he really is, you know, fantastic, and we're so lucky to have him. And the amount of money having an in-house sign maker saves us is incredible. And if anyone has seen his work, he's a very talented man. So thank you, Dan.
All righty. And I also want to thank his lovely wife, Lindsay, who puts up with all the demands that we put on him. She's a real trooper. And Commissioner Duffy, now if you ask the question, then I'm going to tell you. I had a bout with shingles. It was all over my head and face. And this is what's left over from it. So no jokes. No, I know what you're up to. Okay. I'll take a motion to open the public portion.
Okay, I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. Lou, if you could, if you could just give, I know you do that before every open public portion, indicating how people can contact us?
Yes. Yes. So the annual notice that was published this past weekend in the, both the Herald News and the Burton Record calls for, if people want to make comments, they should mention it. They should email public@passaiccountynj.org, and they can speak live to the county commissioners. The public notice did not call for reading comments on Facebook. So just, and we have mentioned on Facebook comments that if people have comments, they should submit to public@passaiccountynj.org.
Thank you, Lou.
So with that being said, Micah, do we have anybody sitting?
We presently have no hands raised, and there has been no comments made as of yet.
Okay. You want to wait another minute?
Yeah, so we can wait another minute?
And also, as of right now, I am not in receipt of anything at public@passaiccountynj.org. We did put on Facebook, please be advised that you need to submit to public@passaiccountynj.org.
If we still have none, I'm going to move to close.
Motion to close, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
Adam L.
Yes.
Are we going to vote on these individually, or?
Correct. Thank you, Director. Yes, please.
All right, I'll move bell one.
I have a motion to move one. I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second?
Was that seconded by Commissioner Lazara?
Yes.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
I'm going to move bell two.
I'll second number two.
A motion is second. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy? Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
And now I'll move bell three.
I have a motion to move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. The consent agenda, county council, written in late starters?
Yes, Director, through you, there's a few changes we need to address. First, we need to, with your permission, remove K-16, replace it with the late starter. I've labeled K-73, which is a resolution authorizing contract modifications for personally associates and for the comprehensive community needs assessment of the Passaic County Department of Human Services pursuant to NJAC 5-QL 30-11.6 at SEC. K-74, which is a resolution authorizing the 2021 temporary capital budget for the county of Passaic. And finally, an amendment to K-25 to attach the executed and notarized business entity disclosure certification from Dean and Law Books that was just received by my office yesterday.
Okay, any questions on the late starters?
Yeah, Matt, do you actually use those books?
It's primarily for the prosecutor's office for Westlaw. We've phased out buying books. They still buy about fifty thousand dollars worth of books every year.
I mean, it's all online now, right? Like, I mean, I can go in most old-school law offices, they have all of those books lined up, but, I mean, they've never been cracked open.
If you want to try with the prosecutor, by all means, I've tried. If you want the books.
While you not want any trouble with the prosecutor, no, sir. Thank you.
I will say that for the rules, I still go to the books because of the annotations. And actually, when I worked at Kennedy County Prosecutor's Office many years ago, we were still jeopardizing with the books, and only Matt knows what that means, but it's a terrible thing.
How is the prosecutor throwing the book at you if they don't have the books?
True. Just a reminder, if anyone needs, if any county commissioner needs a resolution removed from the consent agenda, to make that motion through the director. There is no need for an executive session.
I'll take a motion to add the late starters in their form. Second. Moved by Freehold and James, I think, seconded by Freehold and Bartlet.
I'll second Lazara.
Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda with the...
I'm sorry, Director, if you could just also do a motion to amend K-25, because you just mentioned the late starters in that motion.
Okay, I'll take a motion to amend K-25. Thank you.
I'll second it.
A motion in a second. Roll call.
That was made by Lazara, Commissioner Lazara?
Yes.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. Now I'll take a motion to move the consent agenda.
A motion, we have a second? Any discussion?
Okay, so just so we're clear, the motion was made by Bartlet?
Sure.
Seconded by James?
I don't care. Where I heard is fine.
Okay. County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. New business? Take a motion on number one?
I'll move it.
Director, I do need to read the title into the record.
Prior to?
Prior to the motion to approve on first reading.
Got it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bond ordinance 2021-01, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery in or in by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate a sum of fourteen million to pay for the cost thereof to appropriate capital, service to make down, make a down payment or fully fund appropriations from the Capital Improvement Fund, authorize the issuance of bonds, finance such appropriations, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
I'll take a motion to approve bond ordinance 2021-01 on first reading.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara? Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes.
Next item?
Bond ordinance 2021-02, bond ordinance authorizing the undertaking of various public improvements for the Passaic County Community College and by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of four million, nine hundred and eighty thousand to pay for the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to furnish, finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
I'll take a motion to approve bond ordinance 2021-02 on first reading.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Achter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lepore?
Yes. Next item?
Bond ordinance 2021-03, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology and telecommunications equipment, new additional... Excuse me. Furnishing, furnishing. Excuse me. The new communication, I'm sorry, I can't finish.
You want me to read it?
Finish up. I'm sorry.
That's all right. Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of a new additional, new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new information technology and telecommunications equipment, new additional furnishings, new communication and signal systems equipment, and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment for the Pasay County Community College in by and for the county of Pasay, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,96,160 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance the appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation, in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. I'll take a motion to approve bond ordinance 2021-03 on first reading?
I'll move it.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, I'll take a motion on personnel?
I'll move it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes, take a motion for the bills?
I'll move the bills list.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Deputy Director James?
Yes.
Director Lapore?
Yes. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion, I have a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners, Apter?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Lazara?
Yes.
Lapore?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Good night, be well.
Thank you, Director.
Good night.